So I'm calling this meeting of the Greenfield Planning Board, Thursday, October 22nd, October 21st. Kind of run right out of the box, April 21st, 2022, planning board meeting, 6:03 PM. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience, in the public who's recording this as well? Let me know. Okay, hearing none, that's fine. I will. I'll start off with a roll call. George Toulamis.
Here.
David Chichester.
Here.
Kennedy Hussy, absent. Emily Ash, absent. Mark Bologna, absent. Alternate Indian Big Man, absent. Are you taking notes, David? By any chance, I see you writing.
I can certainly do that.
That would be great, thank you.
Let me, may I ask a question or two about that? In previous minutes, there was a lot of summary of what different people had said. Is that something that is expected here to try to track the?
No, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be, it's not a transcript. It's just trying to capture the spirit of what's talked about, and then if any action items are taken, recording that and who and how we voted. George?
And often in standard public meeting minutes, it isn't even specified who made what point. It's just that, you know, the points that were covered and most importantly, the decisions that were made and what the votes were, so.
Right, right.
Thank you for doing that, Dave.
Yeah, thanks.
Welcome.
Yeah, so the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from April 7th, 2022. I had no comments myself. They all look pretty, pretty well summarized. George?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Hi, yeah, no further discussion.
May I make a, just an off note comment?
Yes.
I'm a, I was elevated at that meeting, and my name does not appear on the headline of the stationery, and I'm just going to make a note to Eric to,
Okay.
I assume that I could be included in the headline.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and also I should, I should note that in order to maintain a quorum on this evening, I'm elevating you, David. Full status.
Okay.
And you, you did that before the vote, of course.
Of course. I did it. Yeah. Very informal here. I always say I'm going to get it right. I'm going to run, I've never run a flawless meeting. Elusive goal. Okay, the first action item is the planning board's deliberation and initiation of the proposed amendments to section 206.7, signs of the zoning ordinance. And I thought it would be helpful, just because we've been, we've been talking about this for a while, and there are a number of, of, of issues sort of encompassed in this, in this ordinance, that I would just go over them quickly. Give us all the opportunity to look at them. So the, the first issue that we're looking at is 206.73 signs in limited commercial and general industry districts. And this is where we were talking about what, what happens when a building's on a corner. And for the, the previous ordinance, limited, limited signs just being on one side of the building. So what we're doing here is we're allowing signs on both sides of a corner building and prescribing the, the maximum allowable square footage of signs on each side of the building. And then we do the same thing down here for, for the general commercial district again, just allowing signs to be on, on both sides of a corner building. If anybody has any, I, yeah, just, just speak out if you have any questions or,
No.
Because I can't, and I'm reading this, it's not as easy for me to see people raise their hands.
Thanks, it's, it's good to review it, I agree.
Yeah, and the other issue here, item C has to do with, with projecting signs, and we're not really changing anything in terms of the way that projecting signs, you know, are like the, the physical limitations to them. We're just saying that we know they no longer, you know, longer have to get a license from the licensing commission in order to have a projecting sign. Item five was, has been sort of the the result of a lot of, a lot of discussion and debate, and I'm going to read this one through. Dynamic display signs, also known as electronic messaging centers, shall be prohibited. Dynamic display signs, also known as electronic messaging centers, means any design, any sign designed for outdoor use that is capable of displaying electronic signal, including but not limited to cathode ray tubes, light emitting diode displays, plasma displays, liquid crystal displays, or the technologies used in commercially available televisions or computer monitors. Signs with this technology, which are placed in a, by a public agency for the purpose of directing or regulating pedestrian or vehicular movement, are exempt from this chapter. And so what we're, you know, what we're basically eliminating from the ordinance, from the ordinance are all the miscellaneous sort of rules and regulations around dynamic signs, because they're no longer applicable, because the signs aren't allowed in the first place. So we don't have to worry about any of those, any of those, sort of, any of those metrics.
Charles?
Yes.
Two things before we leave that section. The very last sentence of that is for the purpose of directing or regulating pedestrian or vehicle movement use? I don't know why the word use is there.
Signs with this technology, which are placed by a public agency for the purpose of directing or regulating pedestrian or vehicular movement. Yeah, I think that's just a, that's just probably like a typo, that's an archaic typo, so I'm sure we can just eliminate that, and we'll, we can talk about that in the public hearing. But let's just remember that. I think we can initiate this, or we could ask, actually, we can initiate this as is and just ask Eric to remove the, the R from there, the article. Is that an article or, or is it a transitory?
It's, it's here, it's a noun. I think it's use, I think it's.
Oh, I was thinking word use, I was thinking are, right, use. Okay.
Do you see what I'm talking about, David?
Yes, I, yeah.
I do, yes.
Yep, and the other thing, Charles, related to this is Eric had, at our request, made this item the new item number five.
Right.
And so all the subsequent things that were existing have been renumbered.
Right.
But that's not reflected. Usually, he's so meticulous, he would have, you know, the new number six would be five, you know, struck through, then six.
Right.
So for when this goes through formally, that has to be addressed. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, so if you can make a note of that, David.
I'm sorry, now I'm, I lost you on that one, George.
Sure, so the, the dynamic sign
Yep.
item was put in the midst of other existing things, so it was made number five now. So what is now number six, no shines will be designed or colored. That was number five, so technically, there should be a five with a strike through, and then six, and then a six with a strike through seven. It's tedious, but, and Eric usually does that meticulously, but just wanted to.
It had nauseam all the way through 18.
Right. So I just wanted to, you know, note that for his, because that's, that was the intention, obviously, and that's usually what would be done, so.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, George.
Thanks, yep.
So the next one, we're moving down to his number 13, having to do with awnings, and it's just saying that I believe what it's, what, what the point is here is that it's not the whole area of the awning that is counted as the area of the sign, it's the sizes of the letters. To become, to become measured for the signage. And number 18, just talking.
If I can also, Charles?
Yes.
That on number 13, it also, as with the, one of the earlier things, it takes it out of having to go through the licensing commission.
Right.
Because that's one of the other principles is to try to reduce steps, you know, that might get in the way of business, you know, activity that seems unnecessary. Thanks.
Yeah. And number 18 has to do with sandwich board signs. Sandwich board signs, so again, in, in the, in the spirit of what George was just mentioning, we're taking away the licensing requirements for sandwich board signs. And then we're adding a series of sort of dimensional restrictions and limitations on sandwich board signs, mainly based on the width of the sidewalk, they're going out on, have to be a minimum 48 inches wide, travel path, no obstruction of accessible routes, can't lean it against fire hydrants or parking meters. And, and they can only be displayed during hours of operation. And that is, I think that basically captures everything in here. So I just think it's helpful to go through it, so that when people ask us, so what was that ordinance about? We can speak intelligently and confidently
Charles, I want to, I wanted to touch on the dynamic display
Yep.
topic for a couple minutes. I, I just wanted to reflect, I did go around today to look at the five existing such signs. And just wanted to offer, you know, kind of continuation of our discussion about these, but I saw that the CVS one, though it's relatively subdued, it's red lettering on black background, it does change every three to four seconds.
Yeah, I know, I noticed that myself.
And half of it is saying we're open 24 hours, which is, I think, amply conveyed by a lot of other signs.
No, it's true.
And the other one was a, was a text thing, I think something about getting a job or something like that, but it, it's, it would seem hard to read if you're, this is mostly directed at drivers, and it would seem hard to read, and that, that touches on, you know, that one wasn't particularly an offense to the eyes, so to speak, you know, because we talk about the aesthetics, but it just seemed like, you know, if you're targeting drivers, that is an area that's really busy. There have been, I think, two pedestrian deaths there where people have crossed, because there's a long distance, obviously, between the crosswalk up near Garfield's, no, I can't remember the name of the street up there, but across from the elementary school and the one just north of Maple Street, that's a long distance, and so technically, is my understanding, if you have a certain number of yards between, between crosswalks, pedestrians have a right to cross. And so people, I think, are following their, their legal rights, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, that was where, when it was Super Johns, was when these happened, I think, and people were going between one, you know, one edge to the other. And so that's a dangerous place, that's a place where you want, there's a lot of curb cuts for cars on each side, and you want drivers to be closely attentive. And to have something there that changes so quickly, and with the idea that drivers are going to be reading this seems to me a hazard. It seems, it seems just totally improper from the point of view of public safety, because we're also, we're talking about, you know, complete streets. So that's a road where we have bike lanes, and so, you know, all the more reason that people be really careful in their attention. So that's one, I just wanted to offer that. The Walgreens one up the street was actually malfunctioning when I went to. So it was, it was just kind of, you could barely read most of it. The, the church one was, at the time I saw it, it was just steady, and it just was giving the hours, I think, of the services. The high school one was changing every two or three seconds.
Right.
And one thing, it was giving, one of the things was the time and tempster, and I'm thinking, I know, there's, you know, in downtowns, you know, banks do the time and temp, that's pretty traditional. But, you know, everybody can easily know what time it is in their car, or on their phone, or whatever.
I know, I know, it's ridiculous.
And, yeah, and the tempster, you've been outside, you know? And I think it's just, it, it's just, you know, that's one of the standard options. So they said, oh, sure, put the time and temp up there sometimes.
Right.
And that, to me, speaks to the concept that if you have these kinds of signs, they're going to be overused, they're going to be used for things they're not needed for. Which, which just is visual clutter, distraction, and, and generally unnecessary functions.
Right, and that's the purpose of, that's why we're saying no more.
Yes, and I just wanted to review this again, just for, you know, to get it up, because, and then, I got to say, the one, the GCC sign at the roundabout, today was the first time I actually saw it. I've been hearing about it during our discussions. My God, what an abomination. It is awful. It is, it is so glaring, so bright, the colors are so strong, it changes every five to six seconds. We, we got a friggin' roundabout there, where people have to be very careful with their merging and stuff like this. You got, you know, pedestrians, you got bicycles, and you're flashing this thing with all kinds of dense information feet away? That seems crazy. So it just, my little tour, just affirmed our position that the, the negative impact of these things outweighs any commercial or public benefit. So I just wanted to offer that sum up, because I just wanted to do my homework and go check them all out again.
Yeah, that's excellent, George, and you know, now it's recorded for the record, and so, I think, you know, it's, it's information that, you know, people want to tune in and listen, oh, that's why, that's why they're doing it. So it's true, and, you know, I think there's enforcement.
Say again, you froze there, Charles.
I think there were probably enforcement issues around the high school signs, because they were, that was permitted, and I don't believe it was supposed to flash for the most, 30 seconds.
Well, that, oh, good.
They're already, they're already in violation of the ordinance, as it, as it was permitted.
Okay, I, I was not sure about that, but David, you, sorry.
Come on, good job. Like it, if you're kind of finished with this, George, I'd like to go back just a minute, I'm trying to go through this. These, these eight pages of, of regulations must have been written by a committee. Because they, I was having a hard time waiting through some of it. This is really the first time that I've ever gone through in detail all of these words. One of the things that maybe you could help me with is I'm referring to on, it would be the top of page two, which would be letter D, let's see, A1D. Okay, now it's referring to permitted signs by, by the district. And it's talking about, it's referring to one bulletin or announcement board or identification sign. And I'm wondering whether that is in conflict with the display, the, the dynamic display at a bulletin or announcement board, or am I just reading much too much into this?
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I really don't know what, we have bulletin or announcement board.
You're fading out, Charles.
Those, those particular signs, bulletin and announcement board aren't in the definitions, so I'm not sure what they are. But I don't, but they're not, they, they don't relate to dynamic display signs.
Okay.
So.
So you don't think it could be construed or found in conflict with the dynamic displays?
No, I don't, because it does, because a dynamic display sign has a very specific definition of what it is, you know, it's the cathode ray, it's the LED, it's plasma, illuminated from within, so, you know, if, if anybody tried to hang a bulletin or announcement board that, you know, had any of those properties, it would be considered a EMC.
The, the other, other very, very minor issue that I had, I, I picked up, there are several places in the text where there are extra spaces and it's, I just need to go through with it, with some, some kind of a review program, just to pick up on some of that, so that it's, it's clean.
All right, well, that doesn't sound like any content related stuff, so.
Not content related.
That's just sort of.
And, and to your first comment, David, these are all committee
I know.
Committee created, and then, you know, council, or who knows when this first came, select board approved, so it is, it's always a collective process.
That makes it fun meeting, though.
One other thing I wanted to touch on about the dynamic display is that we, just to make sure, trying to always think through, are we missing something? Is there some unintended consequence? Or are we missing some example? The, the signs that display the prices of gas stations, which are very common thing we see, are those, do those fit in within this? I think we touched on them, but I can't.
I asked Eric about that, and he, and he said, no, they don't, and, and and I forget why exactly, but.
Is that state regulated perhaps, or?
He didn't, he didn't say, he didn't mention that.
Okay, but he thought this was not in conflict with that practice, because that's a pretty widespread practice, and
Yeah, it is.
I'm not saying it's, it's absolutely essential for them, but it's, you know, pretty, pretty standard, so just want to make sure we weren't covering something we weren't intending to, to touch on.
Right, right. I mean, that, that's something that could come up in the public hearing.
Yeah, that, well, that's what I want to, yeah.
And I would, and I wouldn't mind getting clarification, Eric, in the public hearing on that.
That would be good to make a note of as well.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah. Yep.
Thanks.
And then, and then I guess another thing is, what do we, you know, another issue we don't want to talk about is now we have like five non-conforming signs.
I'm, I'm losing your audio.
Yeah.
I don't know why that is.
When you lean away or something, Charles, I think it's pretty sensitive, I guess.
Let me see if I can figure out what's going on here.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't have my, I didn't have my headphone mic on. So where was I? So what happens when, when one of these existing non-conforming signs kind of malfunctions or has to be replaced, or you know, are, are they allowed, are they allowed to do that, or do we want to, do we want to include something in the ordinance that says, you know, once a sign dies, you know? It's a, well, it can't be, you can't replace an existing sign with a new sign, I guess would be what I'm wondering about.
Well, maybe we should check the last page of the current ordinance, FH, this is the general category of exceptions. Do you want me to read that?
You are, I mean, it was F8, F8, F8.
HH?
F? H?
Yeah, no, yes.
On non-conforming signs.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, it's H, not FH, H.
Yeah, yeah.
Non-conforming signs.
Non-conforming signs or other advertising devices legally erected may continue to be maintained, provided however that no such sign or other advertising device shall be permitted if it is enlarged, reworded, other than in the case of a theater or cinema signs or time and temperature signs. Reduced or altered in any way, including repainting in a different color, except to conform to requirements in this ordinance, and provided further than any such sign or other advertising device, which has been destroyed or damaged or has deteriorated to such an event, the cost of restoration would exceed a third of the value of the replacement cost of the sign or other advertising device, the time of the restoration shall be repaired or rebuilt or altered, except to conform to the requirements of this ordinance. I don't, what does that mean?
No, shall not be repaired or rebuilt or altered. So it, I think it, it is kind of like you're saying, it's a little bit of an expiration. If, if the, you know, if the sign is deteriorated to the extent it has to be substantially restored, it has to come within, you know, within the, conform to the requirements of the ordinance. So.
Yeah.
No, I didn't know, the other thing that occurred to me is though these other, these pre-existing signs couldn't be I, I guess they can't be come within the ordinance at all, just occurred to me something like the, what is it, the 30-second changeover, we saw the literature that that's highway safety recommends a 30-second turnaround. So I didn't know if there's some way to, but I, but I guess there's no way to have the ordinance address things retroactively, if it's already, if it hadn't been.
I, you know, that, well, that's in, you know, I think that's an enforcement issue. I mean, I think this, because I think the original ordinance talked about changes not being in 30 seconds, and so those signs that are flashing or changing more frequently are, are they're, they're, they're not, they're, they're not allowed.
You think that's in the current ordinance?
Think it is, let me see if I can find it.
I thought that was something we were originally proposing.
Well, no, because there is, because right now there is an ordinance that allows these signs, and we've, and we permitted the the sign out by the, up by the high school under the ordinance, and, and there was discussion about the, about the changeovers.
But if I, again, Charles, I, I don't know that that was because we had an established standard, I think that was for that. If you look at the bottom of page four, where it's struck out, if we were going to have recommend dynamic display signs, it says minimum display time between changes shall be 30 seconds.
Right.
That was going to be in there, but you think it's?
Yeah, but I think that was because it was original language that was, that was being carried over. I mean, I don't know, I just, I think it might have been. So let me just see what, what section this is, this is. Are you seeing me scroll through the document here?
Yes.
206.7. Let me do something here. Do a new share. Okay, are you seeing the zoning ordinance up here now? Scrolling through the table, the.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Can't read it, because it's so small, but can see it.
Well, I'll, I'll pull it up when I get there, 200, 200, 206.7.
I'm happy to be proven wrong, but I don't think that was actually anticipated by the current ordinance. I think that came up probably as a one-off for the high school sign, and that's how we permitted it. That was a condition, and if that was, I don't remember that, but you're saying it was, and that we were.
I don't know, I, your, your memory is better than mine, I've, I've discovered over the years. So let's see.
My sense is, because we have been talking about this for a number of months, we had kind of assumed that was going to be our proposal, the 30-second guideline. But I don't think it was pre-existing in the ordinance, in this section of the orders.
It's like, looks like you're right. I don't see any, any reference here to trying to messaging centers. Okay.
Do you want to make note of this?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I don't think we need to. Okay.
So if there's no, oh, I was gonna make a motion to um with the uh minor uh adjustments we had talked about of the letter numbering and the the elimination of the word use. I was gonna make a uh motion to initiate uh this uh these proposed amendments to section two hundred dash six point seven.
I'll second. Wait for David to finish writing.
I did not take shorthand in school.
Yeah.
I I was the, I was the committee clerk for three years. Trust me, I feel your pain.
Thank you.
I somehow leapfrogged that that honor is duty.
So with with the uh the consideration of the numbering issue and the elimination of the word use.
Yes.
Most motions to uh what?
Initiate forward to initiate, I think is the.
Right.
That's that's already written out somewhere in the.
Yep, yeah.
Agenda, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Unanimous, David. Whoops, I just broke my scale in half. That's what happened.
Even though we don't have a quorum.
No, we do.
Well, we do have a quorum. Quorum is three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Unless 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 it's a special.
Yep.
This is a public hearing and then you need and then you need at least four.
The super majority, yeah.
Right.
For a special permit, you mean?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, I said it's public, yeah, right. Or public hearing, but a special permit is a public hearing.
But there are other public hearings that are, we'll have a public hearing on this.
Right.
And then there will be a.
You don't need and and we don't need five people for that. I think we might. I think we need a super majority for a public hearing.
We'll have to leave that question hanging.
Well, I I remember like the last public hearing we had and and I only had three members and we we were scrambling to get a fourth and the mayor had to sit in.
I think that was when we only had two of us. It was it was just you and me, I think. That's why, but.
Well, you're probably right. Once again. I can just, I should just keep my record. All right, moving right along. Next order of business is the approval not required plan endorsement for a lot off White Birch Avenue Assessor's Map Tax forty lot twelve submitted by William Norstrom and Paul Swenson. And let's see here.
This is interesting.
Yeah, so it looks like um.
It's like the skinny column is being connected to this large lot.
Right, and I think I think it's, I think it's because there is a uh, there's a water right away along this little parcel A that services this house two thirty one. So it's just, it, my guess is, is to give down control of of the property. You know, that, I mean, they could have, they they had two options, probably. One was do this A and R or have a deed of easement. And and they probably just decided to do it this way. Because the neighbor was a minimal.
That's interesting.
So, yeah, so they're taking parcel A and joining it to lot two.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Nope. I'll just uh make a uh motion to endorse this A and R.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Unanimous, David. Beautiful.
And I will also make a motion to have the chair um sign this A and R on behalf of the board.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
To sign this, I'm sorry.
Sign this on behalf of the board.
To sign this on behalf of the board, got it.
Yeah, just the background is that there, as you'll see on these documents, um, there's a space for every board member to sign. And we used to have this little, whenever we would do one of these, there were like four copies, I think, that have to be signed. So we would be passing pens and papers around the table and stuff. And we realized, oh, we can just delegate the chair to sign.
Right. Delegate the chair. We didn't, the plan, for years, the planning board never reviewed these at all.
Right, it was just done by the chair, but then it
Right.
became clear it was supposed to be technically. And as I think you said, Charles, it's kind of interesting to go through these and kind of see.
It's like one of our responsibilities, so.
So I should second that then.
Well, I seconded it.
Oh, you did? All right.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a conflict of interest.
Okay.
And uh, did we have the vote on that?
I, we did. I thought we did.
Defer to Dave's pace here.
Thank you.
Sure. I don't know what that's like.
Um, so the next is talking about coming back for in person meetings. Um, Eric sent us an email. Uh, that's sort of an information email about this. See if I can get it out here.
So, Charles, before we go on to that, I I I don't know that we, Dave was saying he didn't think we did do a vote to delegate you, so maybe we should just do it for form sake.
Okay, I.
I. Thank you.
So, so he says for this, for the discussion of when to return to in person meetings, um, Eric offers the following information. The meeting room at City Hall is now hybrid capable for public meetings. So that's good to know. The John Zon Community Center will be hybrid capable June first. The city has a new Zoom account, which will be replacing Webex by July first. And then, as far as Eric knows, the July fifteenth deadline set by the governor to return to in person meetings is still valid. So um so our deadline is July fifteenth. And I, you know, I think I think I would wait for the, till we have, you know, at least five people here to take a vote on something. And besides, this is just discussion anyway. It's not really an action item. What what you, what what do you two think about this?
Um, thanks, Charles. I uh, I think we shouldn't um, we should stick with the the location we've done before, so stick with the Johns on. I think that's more amenable to public participation. And I'm delighted to hear that it's gonna be hybrid. Because again, that allows for um, you know, broader participation in the moment and also um broader access, assuming that means you can still record it and not dependent on someone coming with the camera, you know, to to do that. So I think that's great for public access. Um, and so I would be inclined, I think, to do it um starting June um uh, so that um, uh, you know, we can be at the Zon and and get going again. And we can do it hybrid, uh, but I agree with you. I'd want to defer to uh the larger um group to see if other people want to delay. It sounds like we have to start sometime in July, so.
Right, unless there's some kind of resurgence spike. What do you think, David?
I love the convenience of this kind of uh situation of of the uh the virtual approach. But there's something lacking uh in terms of, I think, our relationship to each other and to the public. Uh, and uh, so I, despite the convenience of it, uh, I would be in very much in favor of a meeting and the John Zon sounds a little bit more convenient uh from what I can tell, rather than trying to to go to the City Hall. So I would be in favor of that and I I agree that we should have the full vote.
Yeah. I'm inclined to, John Zon is the right place and uh I look forward to meeting in person again. I think I think that the democratic process breaks down when it's done behind TV screens. It just, it just does. And I think that I don't, George?
Oh, no, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was.
Oh, yeah, and I think that uh, you know, having people be able to come out to meetings is better. And you know, you get, you get real input that way. I think that lots of times you know, people don't know about the meetings. They don't feel like tuning in or if they do tune in, they don't really say, you know, participate, so.
Well, I thi- I think that um, actually, I've been pleased uh with how we've done as a um as a public entity um uh during this time, this two years. Because I think we have had very solid deliberative process. Um, and uh, I I think in some ways, more people maybe have attended at times uh because they did have, as Dave's referring to, the convenience factor. And my sense is the the hybrid, um, I don't know, I mean, there are still uh, if there's justification, there's remote participation options for members of boards or committees, I believe. But um, I I think that, but I think you have to have a in person quorum to hold the meeting is is my understanding. Um, and but for the public, I think having it hybrid is great because it's best of both worlds. People can come in person to get that experience, but they also can participate. And as I said, they can um, uh, you know, it's more easily recorded um for uh later, later viewing. Charles, I I know as chair, it's your discretion, but I just wanted to, in case you hadn't noticed, Elizabeth earlier had raised her hand and and had put it, I know we're asking people not to do chat during public meetings and stuff, but I know Elizabeth has had her hand up, so I didn't know if you were.
Oh, I didn't. Yes, would you like to contribute something?
I ended up putting in chat. I'm sorry, I had not attended a meeting where um I'd been informed that not to chat. Uh, but I just wanted to mention that one of the other meetings that I'd attended with a different group, I'd show up like everywhere, was that an exemption can be passed per city to keep the online meetings or the hybrid meetings. I just wanted to interject that when it was mentioned that it was required that meetings become held in person. Thank you.
Okay.
And just elaborate if I could, uh, Elizabeth, the reason not to use the chat is simply um because it's something the public can't be uh have access to. So it's an, it's a kind of a private conversation and everything's gotta be out in the open um during a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
Sure.
Yeah, I've I've been to a few planning board meetings, it's sort of before the meeting starts, they open, they open the meeting up to just general public comment. Um, and I know we don't do that. We never have done it, but it might be something to think about.
Well, I know you've been pretty liberal about, you know, members of the public uh participating when they ask. So it's always chair's discretion. It's never guaranteed unless it's a public hearing, but.
Right, right. Um. All right, yeah, well, so we'll let other folks weigh in. Yes, the record ticket vote anyway, so on this, it doesn't matter. I believe also next meeting, next meeting is a big one because we've got the uh the fire station. And then we have like three ZBA recommendations, so it'll be a long meeting, which will be good. But um, the uh, the fire station, because they're applying for two variances, is only gonna be, is only gonna be a planning board recommendation. ZBA will be issuing the site plan um permit because it hasn't variances attached to it. Georgie, are you muted?
Yes, I just, I was, I was telling Laura almost done, she was gonna put something.
Sidebar conversation, okay. Yeah, so that'll be, so, yes.
Go ahead, Dave.
I have just a couple of uh of procedural issues up. One, there was uh on the uh, the uh, on the agenda for tonight, there was uh a place for there to be a vote on uh, trying to find it now, to be a vote on the location, the hybrid approach. Uh, and uh, I just wondered, did we, could we show that it's having passed over or this?
I think it just says it's it's just a discussion item.
Okay, it's a discussion item.
It's not an action items or things that we're gonna liberate and vote on.
Okay.
Eventually, uh, discussion items are just, yeah, just what it sounds like.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll make a a note that the part of the discussion was that we would defer uh a a a vote or an agreement uh pending.
Yeah, I almost think for discussion items, all you have to say is that, you know, the, we, we're gonna, we're gonna defer discussion and deliberation when we have, you know, a full quorum.
Okay, then mechanically, uh, uh, I have this form that Eric sent out to us, which is, but it's delightful to have such a structure. Uh, but uh, just mechanically, what do I do? Do I fill that out and send it to him?
Yeah, you just email to him.
Just email it to him, okay. Uh, I hope that I captured most of the essence of our wisdom.
I'm sure you did. If you want to, if you want to copy me and, you know, and George on the email, we'll review it. We can, you can chime in with any editorial comments and.
I I did the, I did this function with the Conway Planning Board. Uh, but it was not the the back and forth speed with which uh I notice occurs with this group. Uh, so uh, I I had an opportunity to to fill in the blanks, but uh, you guys, it's, it's kind of fun.
Yeah, competitive, competitive deliberation.
Right, so I will, I'll do my best to pass this on to you along with it being directed.
Thanks, Dave.
So, okay. So, we need a vote on uh, on closing this meeting, huh?
George?
Yeah, prior to that, I just wanted to uh touch on item number five, board and staff reports. And I just wanted to update, I'm obviously the um obviously to you guys, but not obviously Elizabeth or other people listening. I'm the planning board representative on the Sustainable Greenfield or the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I just wanted to update you that we're having um a couple of guest speakers the next couple of meetings. Um, next week, we're having Susan Raghavich come to talk about the issue of housing. Uh, she's been involved in a group that's been very active in the last year or so um regarding the uh housing issue and housing crisis. And so that was one topic we wanted to put some real focus on. And it's obviously something that was very um, earned a lot of detail in the master plan. Um, and then the week after that, um, we're hoping that um, uh, we were hoping to focus on the um Community Preservation uh Committee, which was created by the Community Preservation Act. And the planning board representative to that, Mark Maloney, is also the chair of the committee. So we're gonna try to be uh having him come to just fill the Master Plan Implementation Committee on um uh where that stands and, you know, the process that goes along with that. Um, because the passage of the Community Preservation Act was a strong recommendation in the master plan as well, and something that did occur, so. Um, so I just wanted to give those updates, those of the next uh couple of meetings, those two topics were gonna be addressed.
When is, when is that meeting?
There, um, Thursdays, the fourth Thursday of the month. We typically meet five to six thirty, but because the Community Preservation Committee meets five thirty to seven on their, that same Thursday. Uh, and obviously Mark's on it, but also Susan is on that. So we're meeting at four thirty for the next couple of meetings. So next Thursday at four thirty, when uh Susan, I believe, will be there at the early part of the meeting. And a month uh beyond that, uh, I'm waiting to hear back from Mark. But um, hopefully, we'll be discussing the Community Preservation Act and the Community Community Preservation Committee.
Is is there, is there ever a lens sort of looking at it, it, you know? Is, is there, is there ever a lens sort of looking at, at, you know, where the planning board has the ability to, to kind of. Formulate forms zoning that can, that can help out with some of these housing issues?
Sure. Yes. I mean, we're often touching on things that are within the master plan that touched on zoning. And we've had, you know, a number of discussions over the last few years related to that. And we've had Eric come to the, um, SGIC to talk about some zoning things. So certainly. We could revisit at some point, uh, Charles, if you want to talk with Eric about having that on the, um, agenda, could revisit if there are any particular, uh, zoning issues, from the master plan that we might want to prioritize. I know we've been using that as a guide, obviously with a lot of these.
Right.
Things we've been working on, but.
No, that's, that's good. And, and, and to see what, you know. Susan and her group is coming up with and, and, and just, you know, I know we've got the, uh, the open space community, uh, the open space, this is the open space community development. Now, what, what is the ordinance that we're.
The.
We're coming up with.
Cluster, yeah.
Yeah. And so.
We're getting. Okay.
And so that could dovetail into, to enlarge discussions about, about, about creating opportunities for affordable housing through zoning. Um.
Yep.
So. Maybe we can get some momentum around that.
Yeah, because the master plan is obviously a community document, but it's, it's technically a planning board.
Right.
Uh, document, so.
Yeah. Have you heard anything more about, um? The, about some of the ideas about creating affordable housing on the temporary fire station lot? Something that Council Dolan floated a couple of months ago, or former Council Dolan?
The, I know that, um, the committee, the SGIC endorsed that concept and I, I know some others have. I, I couldn't remember if we talked about it at this, at the planning board. Um, and I'm not sure. I'll have a, a better, a better idea of that after our meeting next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I can't remember. I think it was discussed at the council level, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It's obviously a ways away, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Where, where it stands.
If there was, if there was a, a committee actively working on sort of putting together a, uh, an RFP for something like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the nuts and bolts are anybody specifically focusing on that, but.
Yeah.
And, and MJ Adams would be a good person to.
Yeah, MJ.
Yeah, she's, she focuses on a lot of plate spinning.
Yeah.
In that regard, so.
Yeah. Alrighty. Well, thanks, George.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Uh, should be.
I guess I'll move to adjourn.
Right. I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna stop recording now.
Take care, Elizabeth. Good to see you.
Bye-bye.